Thank you, Mark. Mr. Mayor, I think I heard from out in the bank. Councilmember Captain Brown, Councilmember Congressman Dunn, Councilmember Ellen Z. Williams, Councilmember Langford Gilchrist, and Mayor Howard Ford. And there I heard it, boys. Councilmember Rosie Jackson, and Councilmember... President. Mr. Mayor, you have a floor. Please, please. Presenting... Yes, sir. The first reason we present is an Aretopolis CID's Wayfinding and Signage Plan by Mr. Eric N. Crowe. Welcome.
Good evening. Mayor, Council, on behalf of the Aretopolis CID's and our project manager, Mr. Stan Reece, who's also here if you have any questions this evening, we thank you for giving us a few minutes to update you on the Aretopolis wayfinding and signage effort that's been underway for several months. Back in the summer of 2017, the Aretopolis Community Improvement Districts, the Fulton County Airport West District and the Clayton County Airport South District worked together to complete their first-ever master plan. And one of the four major priorities of the master plan was to create a wayfinding signage package that would help enhance the brand perception and wayfinding within the Aretopolis area, as well as bring together various cities to combine their efforts to fostering economic development in and around the airport. So, over the last eight months or so, we've conducted a process in cooperation with staff from the partner cities to develop a concept for that wayfinding and signage package. So what I'm going to brief you on this evening is a concept. It is not ready to move forward to implementation or construction. We wanted, as we've developed the concept, to come out to each of the cities and get your input on this before we went through a process of refining the design in order to prepare it for construction. So the process we've undertaken was first, we reviewed all of the existing wayfinding, branding, and signage within the Aretopolis District and our partner cities. We pulled together a committee that included staff members from each of the counties and cities, as well as the Aretopolis CID and the Alliance. We came up with five initial design concepts and then boiled it down now to the preferred concept, which I'm going to show you this evening. As we went through this process and looked at the various options, while there was a lot of discussion about what the proper design would be, the goals of that design never wavered through this process. And that people wanted to see something that would be simple and elegant, but also something that would be modern, that would be striking visually, and that would create a new brand and look and feel to the Aretopolis area. What we ended up with is not a single sign type, but actually a kit of parts, which includes three different elements: a vertical pylon sign, a potential sculptural element, and then horizontal lettering. And the idea behind this design is it's something that is very flexible and scalable because of the variety of locations within the district. Now, we're not looking to put these everywhere throughout the Aretopolis Districts. These are intended to be along the major interstates and highways as folks enter and exit the Aretopolis area, and in those couple of activity centers that are multi-jurisdictional, where we have several cities that come together, like South Fulton Parkway, Camp Creek Parkway, Phoenix Boulevard on the south side of the airport, and Forest Parkway, and then Virginia Avenue on the north side of the airport. So those four activity centers, major corridors and interstates are where this is intended to be. Again, the three elements are intended to be very flexible and scalable because of all those locations, this is going to have to be something that can fit to the variety of locations, scale, and the amount of land that's available. Those three elements, then, are the vertical pylon that you see here, that's reminiscent of an airport of an airplane wing. It's intended to be made out of aluminum or stainless steel and lit at evening so that it's highly visible both in the daytime and in the evening. The second element that you see here is the possible sculpture, which again is reminiscent of an airplane, a paper airplane in this fact, but it's something that is, in this sculpture, three different elements, again, made out of that shiny metal, out of aluminum, that they can be stacked in different forms and varieties, so that no two signs have to look exactly the same, that they can be variable and have a different degree of creative and visual interest throughout the district. Now, in some cases, we're not going to want to fit the sculpture. The sculpture itself is a striking element, but what's most important is to have the signage for the district, and then to be able to bring that signage back to the local municipal level as well. So in addition to the Aretopolis signage on the vertical pylon, the base of every sculpture will also have the municipality in which the sculpture is located, whether that is the city of South Fulton, or East Point, or College Park, or Hayville, to make sure that we're recognizing not just the district, but the individual cities that make up the district as well. In some cases, that vertical pylon's not going to work, so we have the horizontal signage as well that spells out "Aretopolis" with the raised lettering. That can also be done with the sculpture, as shown in this image, or without the sculpture. And then as we move from the major interstates, where these scales are going to have to be pretty large for cars that, in most cases, are moving by a 50 to 65 miles an hour, as you get off of the interstate and into those business districts, then the signage is scaled back down to a car at pedestrian level, still with the vertical pylon and with the sculptural element, but again with every concrete base calling out the name of the city and the jurisdiction in which the signage is located in. Now, again, at this point, this is a concept plan. It's a design that has been approved by the committee of staff members that were working on it, or were bringing it to the cities for input. And with the input of the cities, what we expect to do this fall is further refine the design, the exact locations for which the signage will be located, and then the cost to implement them. And at that point, the CID, working with the Aretopolis Alliance, will come back to discussion with staff in the cities for the actual funding to implement some of the signage. But the CID is looking to manage all of the design process, to implement them in partnership with the Alliance, and will likely want to come back and partner with the cities for signs that are specifically located within your jurisdiction. So that's the concept plan at this point in the plan for moving forward. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
And to more gateway signs? How would that impact?
Well, I don't think it would be a negative. It would probably be an add-on, depending on what level of input we would have on the signage. So, the areas that the, and I think the Aretopolis folks have kind of highlighted that they have made final decisions, but I think as the council develops or provides their input, it should just take into consideration the key areas that you like gateway signs. I think you highlighted Old National Cascade, you know, other key areas that you like to see gateway signs. As you have an opportunity to provide input here, then it's just sharing that information. And I think the folks at Aretopolis have shown and said that they're more than willing to kind of work with us and make sure those things align.
How much did I say the Aretopolis area?
Well, in this piece, it's a very small amount, right?
It's a fairly small part. There's a little bit along Camp Creek Parkway, South Fulton Parkway, and Highway 29 Roosevelt.
Okay. Well, the next question is, you showed me the Aretopolis District, this town, I think it's back to... I really think it's the Aretopolis, it should be highlighted in the foundation. I mean, you put Aretopolis, I don't have any hints, you know, Aretopolis, except that you don't have nothing I say, all right? That's problematic to me, to me. And I'm sure that always, I'm afraid, someone has been wanting to be a part of the Aretopolis community, but I don't want to, I don't want to overwhelm the city. It's probably what I'm saying. I mean, we are South Fulton, in concert with Aretopol, not Aretopolis in concert with South Fulton, you know? So I would take that back as a consideration. Let me get my meetings right here. I saw him, he's gone, and then Mr. Reed and...
So, can you, thank you, Mr. Reed. Can you share a little bit about how your meeting has been made up? Like, was it made up of a committee? You said staff, was it only staff, or...?
It was mostly staff members, yes, ma'am. So it included staff from the CID and the Alliance, as well as staff members from each of the cities. So, Ms. Reed was part of the committee who was helping lend some perspective from the city of South Fulton, but it included members from each of the cities.
Okay. Ms. Reed?
Yes, Mayor, I was just going to say, they're no part of Old National, it's of our, there's not really any significant part of our city that is in Aretopolis, even those, even the areas that you mentioned, we don't really have any love of there. I do also agree, you know, people are still learning about South Fulton when they start seeing Aretopolis signs. I just think that we are going to have to do some serious public education, and maybe want us to get out of these, before, to, because I'm sure that the Aretopolis will have to, they'll get that, so I think we're going to have to compete in terms of marketing, or just spending on marketing, with this, for the new sign.
Okay. Ms. Reed?
Two questions. Why is it City of South Fulton is not, or City of South Fulton is a part of Aretopolis? Because we were unincorporated, then it wasn't being so much focused? Do you have that answer?
I think, so, to make sure I understand the question, why is the city of South Fulton not more part of the Aretopolis?
Right.
Currently, I mean, the nexus of it, when it formed, was the East Point College Park area. There's nothing that stops us from talking to property owners in the South Fulton area. The process for incorporation into the Aretopolis is kind of this complicated calculation of property value, and number of owners, et cetera, but we are actively pursuing property owners along Buckingham Row, Naturally Fresh. I know the city boundaries get a little complicated around there, but down Old National as well, we're working with the Merchants Association, so we certainly intend to include more properties within the Aretopolis very soon.
The CID is only commercial.
But, and, you know, the CID is only commercial properties, as Eric pointed out.
And the part of 29, is that here, the Buckingham Row area, or where the, I mean, the John Corr is coming, is that? I guess I'm trying to get a, because when you start getting close to the city of South Fulton borders, it is going to cause confusion, because residents are going to say, what is Aretopolis, what does that mean? And also, I want to make sure that whatever gateway sign you're placing, that are close, that is close to our borders, is going to be in alignment with our gateway signs that we are eventually seeking to put up. So I would like to make sure that you all have more conversations with our city to make sure that we are in alignment with design, we have decided where our gateway signs are going to be. And so, we need to make sure that we are discussing, especially that one of 29, because that road, it crosses you the city, it crosses South Fulton, and crosses College Park. There's a lot going on. And half of the road is in District 5, and half of the road is in District 3.
Yeah, we're certainly aware of the complexity of the borders around there, but your comment about coordinating to make sure we're on the same page is definitely...
So you all have those meetings before you place the sign of 29. Can you please remove Councilwoman Jackson and be in discussion?
Absolutely. I'm making every effort to coordinate with elected officials, as well as the citizens in the area.
Mr. President? Okay, now, thank you all so much. Appreciate it. Mr. Reed? The next item is a special event permit presentation made by Taylor Reed, interim Director of Community and Regulatory Affairs.
Okay. This, I'm, I'm, the purpose of tonight's discussion, we're going to speak very quickly on special events, and what we're seeing as far as administrative level on some things that we need your, I guess, weigh in on. We... Okay, sorry about that. So we're going to have a discussion tonight really quickly on current project process, what we're seeing as proposed process, and then also identifying what's next to allow for us to kind of have a better flow when it comes to the administrative side of things. So, the zoning resolution and the parks and recs resolutions both define special events differently. Of course, the zoning resolution identifies it as anything that allows the public to come out as spectators for any special style of event. Parks is saying anything that's used in parks, facilities considered to be a special event should it be, should it have some type of significant effect on the use of the parks. So we just kind of need to tighten up some things, and I'll go into detail to show you what's happening with it. So when is a special event permit needed? This is very important, because we're finding at the administrative level that events are happening without permits. We must ensure that these permits are being issued, because the last thing we want to do is to make sure that public safety is not being considered. The purpose of the permits is to go through a process where public safety, as well as code, ensures that certain things are in place prior to the event taking place, so this definitely protects the public. An administrative permit is defined as anything that's 250 individuals or less, and then anything that's considered a use permit is anything 250 or more. So let me give you an idea of what a 250 or less would be. Something that's considered like a block park, that would be something that's an administrative permit. A use permit would be something like a concert, or something like a fall festival that could have a large scale of individuals that would come in, and I'll tell you exactly how those are being processed soon. And then parks, again, anything that necessarily is a park will have a parks permit. So they don't define it based on the type of, the number of people that will come, they define on the use of their parks. So again, there is administrative permit, that starts in Community and Regulatory Affairs now. It will be moved over to Destination South Fulton in the permitting process. Again, the applicant comes in the door, we give them the application, it's processed there, and it actually permitted it and allowed through that department, but then the use permit is prepared in the same department, but it's carried over to council for council's consideration and deciding upon. And then parks and recs, of course, is received at parks and recs, processed through parks and recs, and issued through parks and recs. So, again, the process, as I mentioned, the administrative special event permit is administratively given. What happens is an applicant comes in the door with the application, we process it through the permitting process, we ensure that certain projects, such as public safety, code enforcement, maybe even the health department, various different departments are reviewing this application to ensure that it's in compliance, and then at administrative level, that director will issue that administrative special event permit. The use permit, same thing happens, but the only thing different is it has to come before you as a board for that decision to be made. Also, any concerts and large festivals should be approved by council. That should be something that you should always make sure it's processed and handled here with you all, before we allow the public to come in and not have public safety as our main concern. And then lastly, as I mentioned, parks and recs is an admin process, very similar to administrative special event permit above. Many, it starts in the office of parks, it's issued through parks, so it doesn't necessarily, well, it doesn't touch our department in permitting, which is where the concern lies with us today. So, we have a concern mainly because there's three different permits, three different, well, two different processes. The first two, as I mentioned, the admin permit and the special event, the admin and the use permit, they all are handled in the same process. But when it comes to parks and recs, parks and recs, it doesn't come to the permitting office, it goes directly to parks. And so, we're wanting to make it so that the process is flowing to where the permitting office is receiving all permits, whether it be for parks and recs, or special events for use permits, or administrative permits. And then we've been in communication with legal, because legal's preparing language, that will gather information that will allow for our process to have deposits, insurance policies, plan requirements, et cetera. So right now, in the zoning ordinance, that does not mention any of those things, so we're very happy to see where the parks ordinance allows for that, because we're trying to also have that in our zoning code. Okay? You got some conclusions on the board?
Ms. Reed?
Hi, Ms. Reed. Um, one, this is sort of a common, but I wish that we, mayor, as, I wish, as we're having this conversation about public events, we also should think about how we do city events. And then maybe that our city events should follow the same sort of process, because all of the partners have a coordinating plans and different things like that. So I wonder if, as you all are developing this for the rest of these events, if you could think about city sponsored events as well. And then my, the second part of that is, I wonder how we are going to publicize this. It would be really easy through the permits department to send like a mail or something out to everyone that applies for a permit, but I know that many of the people who have events, at least in my district, but I think throughout the city, are churches and nonprofits, which may not be in the zoning or regulatory affairs database. And so, one I want to ask legally, are churches bound by these same things, or is there some special rule governing churches? And then two, how will we get this out to churches and nonprofits? And I think particularly because Halloween is coming up, and lots of churches do these big trunk or treat things, and I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want SFP who's showing up and shutting down the trunk or treat, because, you know, something like that.
I have just a few questions. So do you think moving permits under Destination South Fulton is going to, hopefully streamline the process?
So, we're asking about special permits, is that your...
So, these, this process that you're going through, and you're saying that it's going to be under Destination South Fulton, so we're, you know, the permitting process goes to Destination South Fulton?
Right, so the permitting process was already approved, so it will be processed through that department. I want to make sure we make sure they wouldn't be our department.
Yeah, I think we're doing, we're talking about two different things, though. I think the streamlining that you're asking about, it would be under that department anyway, but right now, I think what Ms. Reed is pointing out is that there's conflicts in the ordinance, right? So you have three, is it three different ordinances governing?
It's two different, two different ordinances for three different permit processes.
And I think what the staff is recommending is to have an ordinance that covers it, one ordinance that covers the entire process, whereas right now, the parks ordinance conflicts with the normal permitting process, but it really should be under one. So the recommendation is to have one master permitting ordinance, is what the staff is recommending.
Okay. Another question, brought in these event permits, are there fees associated?
Yes, there are fees. And we have, again, we're not, we're not captivating these events, we're not captivating on that. And so there's fees, where a state event takes place, and let's just say the, the actual eventer, or whatever the title may be, leaves the facility with grounds through thirty, that means that we're going to have to have our staff go out and clean up that event, which means we're necessarily paying for that, but that fee would cover a lot of that when it comes to supplies, when it comes to staff time, et cetera. So, yes, ma'am, those fees would be necessary.
Now, in this new ordinance, will those fees be adjusted, will they hold up?
They can. I mean, we're definitely interested in seeing where we can, you know, capitalize on that.
All right. And my last question, tracking mechanisms and monitoring. So you're going to take yourself, you're not going to be in this process once you...
Yes, I will be in your use permit process, the ones that go before council. So just as the zoning items that come before you, so you'll see where there's kind of Destination South Fulton, or the permitting department, you call them that, the permitting department will handle the use permit and the parks permit, which are both administrative permits. However, the one that will deal with your approval will be the one that comes through our office.
So do you know now how they're tracking these permits, or are they?
It's kind of ironic, we haven't had many, because I'm under the impression these events are just happening without them coming to our office, which is why we want to have an opportunity to make sure that we're all speaking publicly to say that it's the permit process that needs to be ensured. You know, I mentioned public safety, that is our number one concern, of course, making sure that the public has an opportunity to be safe when they're in our events. PD does a thorough review of the applications when they come through, so we want to make sure that all apps have that process.
Okay. I'm just concerned about the tracking mechanism, so like if, for instance, we run into a party that's happening, or, you know, a special event, and PD's a call, and there's, like, you have to go through so many paperwork to find out what's in the permit.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Interesting. So here's the thing, when the application comes in the door, the second it comes into the door, once the permitting department's taken in all the fees and everything, everything is passed out to the relevant departments. Your police chief will literally have to sign off on all events before they're, they're being had in this process, so when there's a call, an event, you'll be able to notify his team saying that there's an event, this event has or does not have a permit. So there's a tracking mechanism, because all department heads will be able to review that file.
Okay. Electronically?
Yes, we send it out via email to all department heads, where we do a review process. We even meet after everyone has received it, we have a meeting on these events, where we sit down and go over them.
And I can, you know, so, Councilman Reed, your question.
Yeah, I was just, I was going to say, I mean, the others, but when you have your event permitted, they actually give a copy of the permit, like a laminated copy to the person, so, and officers should just be able to ask, where is your permit, and they should be able to produce it, if they can't produce it, then I will be on it.
Well, if they give a party, we'll be talking about, you know, they, they want to ask, they have the data for people to see. Okay, I have this, Ms. Reed's next.
When is this permit order that's supposed to come before council?
I believe you're going, you're adding a zoning change on the permission, correct?
So we plan to sit down with the community develop, development department, and just get a bigger picture of what they want to accomplish, and then modify it, that shouldn't take over a week. So we anticipate bringing this item probably the first meeting of November, and the reason it's not coming to be sooner is because we have coordinated scheduling with the planning commission, because it is a zoning item, and it has to go to the planning commission first, so they'll have a special meeting this month, and then after they're reviewed, comment, it will come back to you for that, and final approval.
Have you all looked at what other cities comparable to our size are charging for the permits?
So we are currently looking at these scheduling now, that's something that we are working on in-house, so anything that our office is taking in regards to these, we have now began looking and comparing that, so this is how.
Okay. And, I guess, I don't understand, so essentially, somebody is going to come in and apply for a permit, and they still have to go to two departments, they're going to have to work with Destination South Fulton and Zone?
So the process, when the application comes in the door, the permitting office is the recipient of the application, that's his way down, we're either way moving forward. Once they take in the application, that staff person routes it to all the relevant departments, whether it be zoning, parks and recs, PD, fire, et cetera. So once they're routed out to those departments, each department provides a response into how that will play and have an effect or not, and they'll sign off to grant either approval, recommend approval, or deny, et cetera. So the permitting office will be the main department handling the permitting.
And that's for parks as well?
Yes, well, that's what we're proposing, yes.
Okay. And I guess I would like to make sure we have some consistency in this ordinance, because I know I went out, we went to an event, and the person told me that their, their permit fee was waived, because they were doing a give-back program. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that we have consistency as far as who's being charged, who's not being charged, and when you start talking about parks and recreation or city, most of the events, well, basically, parks and recreation events, are we required, when I say we, the city, are we required to have permits as well?
So in municipalities that are seeing where it's permitting, it's always safe to go through the permitting process yourself, to make sure that you're going, checking certain avenues to cover yourself. Doesn't mean, of course, you can waive your own fees, and it doesn't mean you have to, you know, it just makes sure PD's aware, fire's aware, it just makes sure all of that's involved are aware the event is taking place, it's just safe that way.
Okay. And lastly, I just don't want... And lastly, I just don't want, I just want to make sure that we are streamlining this process. I want to make sure we're going through the permitting process, but I want to make sure we're streamlining it as much as possible, because what I don't want to get labeled as is a city that's complicated to do business, like some of the other cities. And I would like it possible for this to go into effect properly in December, because we have people who already have events scheduled. And so to require them to go back and go through processes like this, when there's going to be an education piece to it, I think will be very unfair. So if you have people in the city using our facilities, or people who are having events, I don't think we should mandate them to go through this process until maybe December, as of December, to give us enough time to give communication. Because there are events planned, there are trunk or treats, there are Halloween events planned. And I definitely don't want to interrupt that, especially when there are good community events that have been working well before we put it in the process.
Okay, Ms. Reed, before you go, let me just add that out of the word, this speaks at all to the possibility of a waiver fee. And if I really wanted to waive a fee, what would that mean, what do I have to do?
I mean, I'm sure legal can waive things, you know?
You don't have to now, you can go here, you can go back and look. I mean, when you come in and say, I think you would, can you waive that fee? Then there's a process. Pretty sure, no.
Right, same, one thing is we can add that into the code, if that's something, right, that's what I mean.
Okay. Ms. Yuliar?
Um, I just, I don't understand why the economy is going through economic development. I know this budget is that way, but it really doesn't make sense to me.
And that's, that's a little bit different issue.
Well, I think we presented it when the budget was passed, they moved.
I can't hear.
So I think we presented it through the budget process, and so when the budget process, we provided our explanation, and so when the budget was approved, they moved. It was the same process as it was. I think the one thing that it does is it gives you a one-stop shop for all your business activities, which is the same, you know, explanation that we provided before. I think the question that came from Ms. Willis or Dr. Rao kind of illuminates it that is, do they have to deal with a bunch of different departments? No, they would deal with the representative from permits, and then internally, all of those inner workings happen, but their account manager is their account manager. And so that is actually how we have coordinated it through the case study we showed you with the Home News Association and many of the others. So we started to put this process in place so far, and have had some strong results, and we hope to build on that.
Did you get that, Ms. Yuliar?
I don't have any, I don't think it still doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, man. All right. Are you finished, Ms. Yuliar? You have anything else?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you, man. Mr. Baker?
My comment was actually a comment that would have fit earlier when Councilman Cleese was talking about the process of possibly asking someone to see something physically for permitting. I just wanted to add, if it's possible, speak with Director Phillips in reference to that. He has some ideas regarding possible stakes and other things like that that could acknowledge, identify that, that the event is already permitted.
Correct. So when you're having a building permit, for example, there's nothing different between a building permit and a special event permit. They're all necessarily paperwork. So what happens is, if you're going out to a construction site and you don't have your permit, we can stop you. It's the same thing for a special event permit, which means when you're issued a special event permit, if you don't have it, you can be stopped. So that's a process that's already in place.
Well, I think what Mr. Baker is talking about, though, to count it back to specifically, is if I'm having something in the park at the facility, we may provide a glass container on the wall that a person will slide the permit, all right, and then take it out. Or if you're having something at a warehouse, you can put a book and book whatever it is, and then remove it after the event is gone. I concur with that, really. And that's where you don't have to even have, even conversation with the police, or anybody else who may want to come in and check.
We're looking for a police person.
Right.
Ms. Reed, we don't do that, man?
Okay, move higher than they have the permit.
To put it up.
Okay. All right, that was my last speaker. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Baker? I believe you have any other presentations for this meeting.
I make promotions in one executive sessions for legal personnel and real estate, real estate. Second?
Probably move to second in discussion. All those favor? Proposed?